I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest, School District Number 67 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 24, 2012. We did hold an executive session at 6:00 PM. May I have, prior to this meeting, but no action was taken. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Present.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Pensersky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Vold?
Here.
Thank you, Board members. That brings us to the President's Report. And just a couple of things. First of all, I really want to thank everyone who attended the reception for Mike Simic and his family, which was held on Wednesday, April 4th. There was quite a nice crowd here. And I think he was very warmly received. Thanks to everyone for doing that. Following that reception, we did have a joint board workshop with District 115 to begin the process of working on district goals. And a couple of questions were posed for the board members. And one of which was describing the five traits you would desire in a graduating high school senior. And then, secondly, each board member was asked to think about what they would like to keep, what they would like to start, and what they would like to stop. So further work on board and district goals will occur over the summer. One other thing, board members, is that the Policy Committee did meet on April 9th and further revised the policies that have been recommended from Mr. Safer, as well as working on a social media policy. The copies of those policies are in the additional materials. And the Policy Committee is meeting again on Thursday morning at, I believe it's 8:00 AM jointly with the High School Policy Committee to further discuss. So, really, we've gotten down to discussing, you know, is, what is the meaning of the word "is"? So, it's really, I mean, we've spent already, I think, four hours discussing these policies. This is going to be our final attempt, but I would ask that you read these. If you have something that you want to, please email me and I will bring that information to the committee for further discussion. Okay? Thank you. That brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Madam President, members of the board and audience, thank you for being here tonight. I just would like to announce two awards and then do a quick introduction of some new special people we have here tonight. First of all, the, I'd like to just announce an award. We actually do win this every year. But with respect to families who check websites for relocation purposes, there is a key website that families across the country will go to. And it's sponsored by the School Search 2012 Group. And have awarded District 67 the Red Apple Award for Educational Excellence. This award goes to, has gone to 79 out of 868 school districts, based on five key indicators: academic performance, pupil teacher ratio, expenditure per pupil, educational level of teachers, and average teacher salary. Note here is that your district is strong and among the best in all five family-oriented categories. So, congratulations to our schools for that. And then, on April 12th, District 67 and 115 were in Washington DC to receive a national award. This is among the first national award-winning districts from the College Board and the Chinese Advanced Placement Language Program, sponsored by the Asian Society. So I was there with our five Mandarin teachers, our K-12 Mandarin teachers, as well as Carolyn Crumice and Andy Hendrickson. Andy has been responsible for District 67 and 115, mostly 67, winning $170,000 worth of awards to help us with our program. And we thought we'd like to show you the award itself, so. It's actually quite heavy. It's like eight pounds. Not sure where we-
What do, what do the characters say?
No, no, I can read it. I can read it. It says, "Congratulations, District 67 and 115." I hope you don't believe that. Yeah. Well, anyway, it's a, it's a great, off to a great start with one of our programs, so. And then, board members, I would like to introduce to you, to our community, a recommendation later on the Board of Education's agenda for tonight is, after extensive evaluation and searching, with more than 45 applications and a considerable screening process, I'm very proud to announce tonight a recommendation from our, from the, that I would be making for having co-principals at Deer Path Middle School for the 2012-2013 year. We did include parents and teachers in the search process, in the interviewing process. We, we did surveying of parents and teachers alike. We also, I also met with a large group of students and took student opinion in and brought that to the interview process also. And that was very interesting with respect to what students would look for with a, with respect to the vacancy we have for next year. So I'm pleased to announce, and I'd like to ask to stand Renee DeVore. Renee, could you please stand if you don't mind? Let's give everybody, Renee, a round of applause, I think. Sorry, Renee, you'll have to stay standing. Is that okay? Yeah, yeah. You can go over to the microphone if you'd like. Renee is, is being recommended as principal of the Deer Path Middle School 7th and 8th Grade Campus. She comes to us from the El Segundo Unified School District in Southern California, actually in the heart of Los Angeles, where she has served as a middle school principal for the past three years with considerable administrative experience in different duties prior to that. I would note that Renee has shown, we also had a site visit. We had Dr. Julie Cooley went, was in Los Angeles, actually, for holiday. I said, "You know, if you're going to be in Los Angeles for a holiday, why don't you slide over and just check out Renee's school?" And pleased to report that Renee shows tremendous capacity for leadership and management of change, working well with students, colleagues, and community alike. In this vein, she's demonstrated an approachable and likable manner. And all who have met her are endeared by her, and her passion and vision for education is immediately evident when you speak with her. Prior to joining the administrative ranks, she was served as a teacher in the San Diego Unified School District for nine years. She holds a bachelor's degree of science in English education from Southern New Hampshire University and a master's degree in educational leadership from San Diego State University. Once again, let's thank Renee for being here with us.
Thank you.
While I'm equally pleased to announce our recommendation to the board for the board's consideration tonight, principal for the Deer Path 5th-6th grade side of the school, and that would be Tom Cardamon. Tom, would you stand, please? Always, Renee, I forgot to tell you earlier, always be ready to say three things. So, under any circumstance. Tom has a long and distinguished history in District 67. Tom began as a full-time teacher in our district in 1998, until he applied for and was offered the Assistant Principal position of Deer Path Middle School East Campus, which he currently holds. Tom is well-known and extremely well-liked within the school district. In his, in the current school year, he's taken on a number of added responsibilities and has proven to be a quick study. Tom heads up our music program and attends all of those events, as well as is now leader of our district wellness program. Tom has earned a bachelor's of science in English education also, and, but in this case, from Boston University. This is two east coast educated people. And a master's of art in teaching and leadership from St. Xavier University. Tom, congratulations to you. Would either, well, yeah, would both of you like to say something?
Thanks. I'll go first. I just want to say, thank you. I am so honored to be a part of Lake Forest community and the school district. I've really had an amazing time. And the two times that I've been here, the people here are so phenomenal, have really taken time to show me around the community and let me know how great this community really is. And yes, I'm moving from sunny weather, but I honestly feel like this is the perfect fit for me and hopefully I'm the perfect fit for all of you. So, thank you again. I really appreciate it.
I'm going to echo a lot of what Renee said. Thank you. You know, I'm really, really excited about moving in this position. Again, I'm lucky because this is the one district, the one building I've really been fortunate enough to work in. You know, some people have heard the story before, but it's the, it's the place that is my home. It's the place that, you know, I was lucky enough to meet my wife, who's right back there.
Everybody, Amy Cardamon, would you, Amy, come on, I want to say hi to you too. And Amy, you're, and Tom has his children here too, so let's let them wave. If you guys could wave.
That's Mia and Adam. But really just fortunate, very blessed and excited to be taking on a new challenge with Renee in leaving the school. And I think we're already off to a really, really wonderful partnership and looking forward to it. So, thank you very much.
Amy, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, if you wanted to get home, this would be a good time too. So, thank you. Renee and Tom, thank you so much. Board members, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. That brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to our reports. 21st Century Learning, the Agile Mind Mathematics Program. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, Board members, we, we have another special, once again, we have a sort of a home run hitting report here tonight. And I'm going to let, I think you're going to really enjoy this. We've got some special guests. So, Dr. Andy Hendrickson?
Thanks, Dr. Griffith. We began this pilot Agile Mind just this year. Sean Weber, Paul Brock, and Jennifer Kohler, in the middle school grades 5 and 6, took on a challenge of this Common Core math curriculum for their standard math kids. And I charged them with really being honest and exploring it. And it's been a challenging year, but a really excellent one. And for this report, Sean suggested that we bring some students to share with you their experiences and how this program has been different than their other years in math. So, Sean?
Excellent. And using Agile Mind this year, I have found that it is more than just a math curriculum. For the students, it has created a journey. It's a journey of deeper understanding and mathematical connections that all the students have had. They're less intimidated by the unknown and willing to tackle mathematics much better, and they have even better questions than they've ever had, and they have a greater desire to take on the math. What a better way to hear about Agile Mind than to hear from the students themselves. So I brought a couple of journey folks with me because really, when we do math each day in the Agile Mind program, it is a bit of a journey. So, you're going to hear from William Steck and Brett Chody, and they're going to talk about what they see when they walk in this math room, and some things they enjoy about it, and some things that are challenging about it. So let's hear from them.
Okay. So, going through Agile Mind each day has really been really, really fun. It was a new experience this year when I first started using Agile Mind rather than a regular textbook or some sort of regular everyday use tool that usually a student last year probably would have used. I know when Mr. Weber first brought me to, or when he first asked me to talk about Agile Mind, he showed us the textbook and how heavy it was and everything. And I was like, "Whoa, we're learning all of this and we're getting, and we're doing it, it's basically substituting." So it's taking away all these features. But really what I wanted to talk about is what Agile Mind is. So, first of all, Agile Mind has been really, really great because it adds a lot of really, really cool features, like animations and different slides, and then you can actually prepare tests on there. So, in some way, it makes it easier for the teachers to not necessarily have to take that time to make the written test, or it just gives them a template. So, as you can see here, this is basically one of our Agile Mind everyday walk-in things. So, you know, we would walk into the classroom, and usually it has something like this up. So, there is a really big, there is a really big selection that you can choose from on different slides. So they have one through, they have 15 slides here, but on other ones, they may only have three. But they, they really have lots of cool features on here, like animations. But on here, they give you almost like an equation through different problems, as you'd see in a normal textbook. And they also have like, different kinds of like ads or something that might be relevant to someone our age, rather than just a textbook that you're just reading out of. In this case, it's bumper cars. So I know for everybody who's ever been to Lake Forest days, sometimes they have bumper cars there, and it's really relevant to us. So it helps to have a really relevant source to draw from in your brain. So I'm going to let Brett now talk about what she would like to-
Okay. So, one of the things I really like about Agile Mind is that on our homework, we sometimes have questions. And if you get a question wrong, it tells you what you did wrong and how to get it correct. Another thing I really like about Agile Mind is that, like what Will said, it has things really relevant to us in our lives, like bumper cars, and it's had mixing paint and ordering pizzas and all these stuff that, and all the stuff that we do in our everyday lives.
Some things too, that when I, when I asked the students, I didn't say, "All right, these are the things you're going to say when we present," because I talked to them about, "We're not selling this, we're just talking about it and their experience." When the students come into my room, we really hit some pretty big problems. And they come in and we really are not just adding numbers, we're not just multiplying, we're not dividing. We are devouring big situations and putting it together and pulling it apart. Wouldn't it be fair to say that often halfway through class, we're just exhausted from learning?
Yes.
Yeah. In fact, sometimes, sometimes they just go, "Enough, Mr. Weber. Enough. We're good." And then we take a break and let it sit in. So, the Agile Mind program has had some great features to it, as these have mentioned. And some things that I really like about it is the motivation piece. They really are motivated to tackle some big problems. When it comes to learning, that's what we want. We really want to be able to walk in, see something hard, and not just throw our hands up and go, "That was hard." It's kind of what we started with, but we grew to the place where now they know that every time they come in the room, it's going to be hard. But if they stay close, it, it won't be hard. We'll start picking it through. And then they kind of get their own wings, and then they start just soaring, and it's, it's fantastic. But I guarantee you tomorrow, it'll be hard. But it'll be really good, though. So, thanks for hearing from them, too. They, they like to talk about it, and they like to talk about what they're, what they're learning. So, thank you.
I know quite a few of the students wanted to talk about it because they've got so much to say. It is a very different program. It's right in line with the Common Core that's coming. It's going to put us in great stead, in great shape for the PARC assessment in 2014. And we're going to continue, I'm sure, to expand this pilot into 7th grade, as I said, next year. Some of the 5th grade teachers even going down are interested in it. So, you have any questions?
So, right now, we're, it's in one classroom or four classrooms, or?
We have four groups of students, four classes of students doing it this year. Three groups of six total standard classes in 6th grade, so half of our standard math students, and one 5th grade class. Next year, it'll be in all 6th grade standard classes and in all 7th grade standard classes. So, quite a bit more than double the number of students will be working with it this year. And our teachers were really coming, they came together unanimously, say, "Yes, we know enough about this, we want this." So, we're excited about their enthusiasm as well.
How widely is this used outside of our 6th grade? In the state or in the country, or?
It's been around, I think, for about four years. It was developed out of University of Texas at Austin by the same, some of the same experts that created the Common Core standards and that are creating currently the PARC assessment. So it's really well researched, and it's going to tailor real close to that. This has been more of a intervention program early on for students that were struggling with algebra. So that was its initial foray into the market. Stevenson, Waukegan are using this as a, as an additional boost for some of their students that struggle to understand algebra. But since then, now it's beginning to become more appealing with, with programs from 5th grade through AP Calc. So they have, they have curriculum developed all the way up.
Andy, I'm sorry, I missed that. Where's this from again?
One of your alma maters, Harry. University of Texas, Austin.
And then, what's the integration between this and the, and Compass Learning? Or does Compass Learning still remain the backup for, you know?
Compass Learning is an excellent backup for all students because it, based on their NWA scores, it identifies what the next skills that they should be working on independently.
Okay. So that's how the integration works with, with this?
And this, although it is an online curriculum, Sean Weber and the teachers that are piloting it, they, they directly teach this to the kids. The kids aren't on their own, working at their own pace. This is a direct teaching type of program. So, yeah. Compass fits nicely with this, though.
Thanks, Andy.
Andy, I know you've been working a lot in the development of our move toward the Common Core. How much choice do we have out there in the marketplace in terms of curricula that are specifically developed toward, for example, teaching Common Core math? Is there a lot, or is it just really in its infancy as a, an industry?
Yeah, it's definitely in infancy. We haven't even seen the PARC assessment yet. So I'm relying on the, the correlation now that the same gentleman that produced this program is working on PARC for that correlation, but I don't, I don't know definitively. Everyday Math says that they'll probably have a Common Core version that is designed ground up for Common Core in a few years. So, we're expecting through our math consultant, Janice Higle, that this coming year will be the very first year that programs designed from the bottom up for Common Core will be developed. That's why our K-8 math teachers, K-8 math committee, will be looking at all of the new offerings this coming year and doing some piloting K-8.
I also want to say, I think it's great that we're exploring these things now ahead of our, our deadline for implementing Common Core, and we have teachers who have experience and facility with it.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very informative, and thanks to the students for sharing their thoughts.
Yeah, let's go ahead, let's thank our students and Sean one more time. Andy, you too. Okay? Thank you, everybody. Yes, thank you. Thank you, William. Thank you, Brett. You're welcome to stay, but you probably have some homework tonight.
And that brings us to our district committees. I'm sorry, to our board committees. First, we have the Board Education Committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
Good evening. The Board Education Committee did meet on Tuesday, April 17th. And very fitting that we've just had this presentation on the Agile Mind math program. It shows more and more how we are utilizing technology with our teachers and with our students to benefit our programs. Because the Education Committee, our meeting, had a lot of time spent with Amy Lambert. She was a guest at our meeting, and she is one of the head DPM Technology Coaches. And we learned about a couple of very interesting programs from her. First, the Middle School Improvement to Homeschool Communication via Technology. She gave us an introduction of a program called Edmodo. Middle school teachers have begun using a web 2.0 tool called Edmodo to enhance teacher-to-student and teacher-to-parent communications. Edmodo looks and acts like Facebook, but is controlled by teachers and keeps all communications secure. Teachers are using Edmodo to share discussion topics, assignments, learning resources, and deadlines with students. Teachers have easy access to creating small groups for projects and the ability to easily notify their students. Numerous teacher and parent meetings have been conducted to introduce Edmodo. A decision will be made in May whether to continue studying Edmodo or to replace Edline with it. Amy also spoke with us about the CUBE project, the C3. And the, the three Cs stand for creativity, collaboration, and communication. But we were debating whether it might be better off called C4, considering it's all critical thinking. This is a proposal of a project at DPM East. She updated the committee on the purpose and planning for the proposed Learning/Media/Technology Center. The idea of remodeling the current time zone and old administrative offices to be a collaborative media/technology learning center was generated by 5th and 6th grade teachers and students who are yearning for a space to learn more collaboratively. The new space would feature plenty of small group learning areas and places for students to use both technology and print media to learn and demonstrate their learning. More than a dozen 5th, 6th, and 7th and 8th graders have been involved in shaping the proposed space. Even a recent field trip was taken to the merchandise mart, and the offices of architects Perkins and Will was a highlight of their involvement. The students shared what they felt was needed in this new 21st century learning environment. Places to research together, create presentations, and Skype experts and fellow learners were at the top of their list. They also suggested a Student Man Genius Bar where teachers and parents could get answers about technology. The proposed space would bring together the technology coach, the netbook technician, librarians, and applied technology teacher in order to jointly support student learning. We are still in the brainstorming phases of this project currently. But interesting to note, neighboring schools such as Stevenson, some Glenview schools, and North Shore Country Day are implementing these types of learning centers in their schools. Finally, Dr. Julie Cooley offered us an update for social emotional wellness. She shared with us a variety of ways in which our district is working alongside our community to prevent further tragedies and provide support to those students and family in need. A task force of 20 people has been created, made up of various members of lead, croya, our schools, local places of worship, Lake Forest Hospital, as well as the Lake Forest Police Department. And a facilitator from Johns Hopkins will be joining this group along with other concerned community members, possibly in June. He is, he specializes in suicide prevention and grief counseling. Dr. Griffith has also met with the president and CEO of Metra, and specialists have been brought in within the last month to speak to our community. The next regularly scheduled committee, meeting of the- The next regularly scheduled committee, meeting of the Education Committee will be on May 14th. And with this time, we are really going to share our highlights in catching up or leading the way. We've been very busy with other things at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. The Board Operations Committee, Lori Rose and Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julia. Our Board Operations Committee met yesterday at 8:30 a.m., and we had one of the largest participations on record. We had our two board members, myself and Rick Schuler, our community members, Stephanie Victor, Lisa Mitchell, and Rick Lee, members of our administration, Harry Griffith, Jennifer Hermes, Alan Albis, Carol White, Cornelius DeBose, and Annie Hendrickson, Tom Cardamone, as well as some architects from Perkins &amp; Will. We proved the minutes and spent some time on our five-year facility plan for Deer Path Middle School. Basically, where we're trying to go is, as we have financial capability, we are working on life safety items such as electrical, but also working on longer-term plans such as removal of asbestos in various buildings and upgrade of the facilities. Based on some recent incidents, there's been some concern about security, so we had a very robust discussion concerning the nature of the security, and planning for that is in place, is rather complex, involves some changes in our systems, as, as well as funding, so that will be coordinated later this summer and implemented as well. We did not have the opportunity to tour Deer Path, which we hope to do at our next meeting on June 5th, but we did have a discussion of the Cube project, which Leslie has described in detail, and so I won't go into in a great deal of detail. Our architects showed us around, and we basically talked about a lot of ideas about the kinds of things that might make learning take place, lines of sight, architectural issues such as noise level, and, and seating groupings, and things like that. I think we'll all be hearing about this in the future as the plans and the budget progress, as neither have been finalized at this time. We also had an interesting discussion with Cornelius about the state of our systems, and we looked at some budgets for that. I'd like to note that this is a continuing discussion, and something where there's great interface between education and operations on the technology side, and we'll continue this further once we're joined by Judith Epke, who's our new Director of Instructional Technology, which, which incorporates that interface. So we, we look forward to some exciting discussions on that. We had a brief discussion of enrollment. As most people are aware, the, the enrollment in our district has been declining, so from an operations point of view, we do have an opportunity to create exciting smaller spaces like the Cube and revamp the time zone while not having the need to go out for further building projects. Carol White also assisted us in going through the details of, of the items such as the lights that were installed in Deer Path, and the repairs that have been made to Sheridan School, actually following our last tour. Our next meeting of the Operations Committee will be on June 5th at 8:30 at Deer Path School. This concludes, unless Rick has anything to add, the Operations Committee report.
Thank you. Now we have the Board Finance Committee, Jeff Penderzki and John Julian.
Good evening. The, the Finance Committee met on April 18th here at the Administrative Building. Present were myself, John Julian from the Board, Liz Brandell, Mike Borkowski, who also joins us tonight, Harry Griffith, and Jennifer Hermes. Unlike most Finance Committee meetings, there were not members of the community present, and I know there are members of the community with concerns about budgets, finance, FOIA, and financial controls, and they are always welcome in our financial, in, in our Finance Committee, because we do a lot of hard work there. And for those with questions, I encourage them to come and join us and see the process. The meeting was called to order at 7:30, and March meeting minutes were presented and The first topic was the Cube project, reconfig, reconfig, reconfiguration of unused space in DPM East for educational purposes. We heard a report from the Education Committee that had met with teachers, students, administrators to discuss the project, which Leslie described, so I will, I will cut my version of it short. What's that? Well, you did.[905.00][905.00](Laughter). But the, yes, you were. But the, the net of it is that it sounds like a, an exciting and cost-efficient way to repurpose unused space, although the Finance Committee eagerly awaits the project to move from ideation and brainstorming to a cost estimate. The, no, but we're supportive, so that's said with a smile. The, the second item on the agenda was the five-year forecast, and Jennifer Hermes, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, reported facts about the district finances and answered a number of questions, what-if questions, about the five-year forecast, the effects of enrollment, the effects of state aid, and of course, the pending negotiations. Jennifer also projected her year-end balances and ma, and long-term revenue and expense forecast. She explained that negotiations have started for both teacher and support staff unions. She explained the process and gave a brief update on the current contract negotiations. The group discussed district goals, and at this point, board goals, and, and at this point, it's really our commitment to invest in the curriculum, maintain safe and, and well-kept facilities, and maintain AAA bond ratings, along with doing innovative process projects like Cube, and also maintaining strong relationships with our unions. Finally, on student fees. Student fees are usually brought, brought to the board this time of year, and they've been flat for the last couple of years due to the, the difficult economic times. The group discussed 12, 13 student fees in detail, and agreed that they should remain flat, with the possible exception of the technology piece moving around. And I'm not sure if that's something we're voting on tonight, or if that's, no, we're going, we're going to refine that and do it next time. So our, our meeting adjourned at 9:30 a.m., and the date for the next Finance Committee meeting has not yet been scheduled, but it will be late in, late in May, and will focus on negotiations, the five-year facilities and life safety plan, initial cost estimates of the Cube, and of course, the usual anxiety list of negative budget impacts beyond our control items such as declining state aid and potential changes to the, the potential, the, the potential changes to the pension funding formula. So that concludes the Finance Report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to district committees, in which board members act as liaisons. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District, and Jeff Penderzki.
I attended the last NSSED meeting, and the main topic that I want to bring back here were, were two things. The, the budget, the budget parameters that we voted on in, in March are being worked through the budget process right now, and I'm pleased to report that that is on track for a positive outcome for not only this year, but the longer-term budget. They, they, they're really pulling in their belt at NSSED, and I will keep you posted as that progresses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. The Illinois Association of School Boards and EdRed, Bill Anderson.
Thank you, Julie. One thing I just wanted to highlight this month was that a law passed in 2011 that requires mandatory training for school board members. And I think in particular, all board members this year are required to take training for the Illinois Open Meetings Act. And if you go to the website of the Illinois Association of School Boards, it gives a number of options for, for doing that. It appears one of the most convenient ones is the conference in November, the three-day conference that's in Chicago. And people who took that course in 2011 are exempt from having to take it in 2012. But this does apply to everyone. No one is grandfathered on this, so people should check the website and make plans accordingly.
Thanks, Bill. Actually, Sharon Golan and I have discussed having somebody come in and do a joint board training to, together with Mike Simakuma, I'm assuming will also have to take that training. So, we'll let you know more.
That sounds like a good idea. Thank you.[1237.33][1237.33](Laughter).
But yes, everyone has to complete it by January 1st, 13. Next, we have Professional Development, Rick Schuler.
Thank you. Nothing new to report this month.
Thank you, Rick. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee, and Lori Rose.
Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not met in the past month. Our next scheduled meeting is May 17th, where we will have a number of agenda items, including middle school math. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Lori. The Spirit of 67 Foundation met, and of course, now, the date escapes me, but we did have contributions in March of $3,800, and district-wide participation is up to 43.1% of our families. There was a very nice employer matching contribution also, so keep that in mind. And then Sally Wood presented the individual grants to the full board. One of the things Sally explained was that each year, each grant is considered based on merit, and not by the amount of dollars that the Spirit has available that year. Grants are also evaluated as to the value or benefit of the grant as compared to its So the board then voted to approve the grants that came forward from the Grants Committee. The annual grant reception is tomorrow evening at Elawa Farms for all board members who are on their, at the edge of their seats, wanting to find out which grants are going to be accepted. And that's at 6:30 at Elawa Farms, and there will be some light orders served, I believe. One other thing is that Home Tour is Thursday, May 3rd, and I believe that is the biggest fundraiser that the Spirit does each year. Thank you very much, board members. Are there any other reports that board members would like to share? Seeing none, we'll move on to recommendations. First is the adoption of a resolution for approval of calendar waiver. Dr. Griffith?
Okay. Board members, this is a peculiar situation. The State of Illinois allows districts to add a waiver into their calendar for certain state holidays. Typically, we use Roman Pulaski Day for school, for example, instead of, as a holiday. However, what the district must do is make application to the state for approval by the State Board of Education for the waivers. District 67 made such application some 10 years ago, and it was renewed every three years. It, it could automatically be renewed, but our application has expired, or will expire next year. And the, the peculiar thing is, the State Board of Education has also abolished the requirement of a waiver. So we actually don't need to do that, right? No, not so easy. They are requiring the regional superintendent offices to, for one more year, require waivers of districts whose, whose, whose application for waiver has, has expired. Many districts are in the middle of their application. Ours is, because ours is expiring, we're sort of one of the few districts that's caught in the middle. So what I would have wanted to do tonight is just to have before you this resolution to request to the State of Illinois. It's only effective for one year, and then the whole waiver process will disappear, even at the regional office level, approval of this waiver. Unfortunately, they also require, as a part of their protocol, that there be a public hearing in advance of the board taking action, and I failed to put that on your agenda. So I would ask that the board table this item until the May board meeting.[1505.13][1505.13](Laughter). Does that, does that sound peculiar?
Yeah, so we will have a public hearing on this matter at, immediately prior to the regular May board meeting.
Can't wait.
And then, consider this. Okay. Do we need to take a vote to table it? Okay, board members, may, are there any questions?
Let's table it.
Okay, may I have a motion to table the adoption of the resolution for approval of the calendar waiver?
Yes, please.
Second, please.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Again, I, I meant to have that in front of the board meeting, but did not do that. Just so you under, also, just to clarify, without the waiver for next year, our calendar would be out of compliance with state requirements, because your calendar for next year was approved a year ago. So we're definitely, we'll be bringing it back. Okay, there is a second calendar item tonight. I'm pleased to report to the board that there were no pigs flying over Lake Forest this year. Dr. Hendrickson, would you explain, please?
We feel fairly confident that we will have no more snow days. So as, as approved earlier, back in June 29, this was our calendar for this year, which was to end on June 8th, but the clause down below here says if there are no emergency days, we could end on Friday, June 1st. So that is what we're recommending.
So, board members, we're asking that you take five days back, and we'll end the calendar year where we really thought it was going to, even because we were also expecting we wouldn't have any snow days this year, so, but this is a necessary step to take.
Is that a question, Dave?
No. Well, yes, as, as it always is, that would be the one hour of school on, on Friday, June 1st.
I might add, Andy, that that's, I think, did the legislature take action to?
Not yet.
Okay, they're considering?
So are we getting rid of that, the one-hour thing?
Not for this year, and not in the future until the legislation later acts. But we are, we are busy meeting that day still.
Any other questions, board members?
I just wanted to point out that the students already think it's June 1st.
Yes, well, as?
Okay. I have a motion to approve the final 2011-12 school calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the appointment of middle school principals. Dr. Griffith?
Once again, board members, it's my pleasure to recommend that Renee DeVore as Principal of Deer Path Middle School for grades seven and eight, and Tom Cardamone as Principal of Deer Path Middle School for grades five and six for the 2012-2013 school year.
Any questions or comments, board members?
Well, no, we, we discussed it earlier. I, I mean, from, from my perspective, I, I'm very comfortable with both of them and the process that, that got them to the recommendation tonight, so I, I think it'll be a nice step forward.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint the middle school principals?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the consent agenda items. We have the approval of minutes of a regular meeting on March 20th, and an executive session on March 20th, that's 2012. The minutes of a special meeting on April 4th, 2012. We also have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement. The March 2012 disbursements totaling $1,550,999. Payrolls totaling $1,438,177. And the March 2012 financial report. report. We also have the approval of human resources items, including leave requests, the approval of new staff, the approval of retirements, and the approval of status changes. With regards to the record of closed meetings and the disposal of audio recordings, there are none. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. Would any board member like to so request? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This brings us to FOIA requests. We had three FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne of 331 East Blatchett Avenue in Lake Bluff, Illinois. Future agenda items. Is there any item that a board member would like to have added to future agenda?
Board members, just quickly and to our audience, I think it'd be great if we could welcome your new board clerk, replacing Pam Burke, who retired, Eileen Fowler, who is a member of our community. I didn't say that, Eileen, you had, you had to be ready to say three things any, any time.
Yes, welcome. Future agenda items. Seeing none, announcements. Wednesday, April 25th, the Spirit Grant Reception at Elawa Farms from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday, May 3rd, the Spirit of 67 Home Tour. Tuesday, May 22nd, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. And Tuesday, May 29th, Deer Path Middle School eighth grade graduation at Lake Forest High School West Campus, 5:00 p.m. And board members, please let Dr. Griffith or I know if you would like to attend graduation and if you would like to participate in graduation. And that brings us to our adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned. Sorry, meeting adjourned.